For all the Boy Scouts who are here, we invite you to come up to the front. And the Girl Scouts too. Come on up.
We have just a few of our finest here tonight. It's great to have you here. And do we have enough -- oh, Councilmember Cook is ready to go with the Constitution. It's great. Welcome to our October 4, 2012 Gilbert Town Council meeting. I officially call the meeting to order. We will begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as councilmembers. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk, and interested persons should contact the clerk for further information. The invocation tonight will be offered by Rabbi David J. Roller. And after the invocation, Councilmember Ray will introduce one of the scouts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Rabbi Roller, it's a pleasure to have you here. We invite those in council chambers to please arise.
Inim atov manohim, shiverachim gam yachad. I read from Psalms 133, how good and how pleasant it is that brethren dwell together. We pray for Gilbert and for all who hold positions of leadership and responsibility in our town's life. Shield them from all illness and peril. Let your blessing rest upon them and make them responsive to your will so that Gilbert may be an example of justice and compassion. And help all of us to renew our dedication to the principles of God-gifted liberty so that America can remain a beacon of faith and freedom for generations yet to come. Amen.
Mayor Jim McKinney will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and for all.
We'll have each one of the mayor introduce themselves by name.
I'm Jim McKinney.
Ricky Seviak.
Cody Smith.
Monty Nielsen.
Spencer Hill.
Peter Geigel.
Ryan Allen.
Brennan Wagner.
Jacob Wagner.
Harrison Dempsey.
Alex Smithy.
Austin Westensko.
Matthew Walker.
Iram Phelps.
Colin Wagner.
Connor Kimball.
John Droguis.
Stan Bush.
Nicholas Quinn.
Ben Archibek.
Chance Davis.
Marshall Uskey.
Bryce Richardson.
Kyle Frederick.
Brandon Tsai.
Ryan Lester.
Dustin Hilton.
Bob Frederick.
Lori Helton.
Jared Schneider.
Simon Higston.
Newton Barney.
Tyler Lowe.
Chandler Romney.
Dallin Everton.
Jacob Perry.
Brett Kubler.
Curtis Smith.
Noah Cox.
Tanner Reed.
Jeremy Haywood.
Adam Lundgren.
Brendan Davis.
Antonio Enriquez.
Alec Droguis.
Sarah Schultz.
Angie Nguyen.
Emily Sterling.
Lauren Bianchi.
Mayor Lewis, you have two-thirds of all the youth in Gilbert. Anything you want to say to them?
Thank you for being here. It is a pleasure to have two-thirds of the energy of Gilbert right in this room right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you. We're giving each of you a Constitution. Encourage you to read it.
After the roll call, we will have Agenda Item Number One, the Oath of Office, which will be administered to Josh and Chris. And Josh and Chris, you can come forward. And our town clerk, Kathy Templeton, will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sense.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
He's here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Quorum is present.
It is an honor to have two of our great volunteers in Gilbert standing to my right who have volunteered their services. And tonight, before they begin their new duties, we will administer the Oath of Office. And I will ask the two of you to raise your right hand. And you know, before I do that, let's put that right hand down. Let me have the two of you introduce yourselves, please.
I'm Joshua Ayler.
Christopher Sippel.
Thank you. And in this Oath of Office, you'll both be asked to state your name. It's when that time comes you can do it in unison. And we'll do the best we can. I'm going to step over to this microphone so that I can be heard, but at the same time that the two of you can be heard, I'll ask you to share the mic. Now you may raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I -- state your name.
I, Christopher Sippel.
Do solemnly swear
solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the ordinances of the town of Gilbert.
And the ordinance of the town of Gilbert.
Maricopa County, Arizona.
Maricopa County, Arizona.
That I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith
and allegiance to the same
and allegiance to the same
and defend them against all enemies
and defend them against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
and I will faithfully
and I will faithfully
and impartially discharge the duties of
discharge the duties of
office of the Planning Commission
office of the Planning Commission
in Gilbert, Arizona
in Gilbert, Arizona
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God. To the two of you, thank you, and I invite those in council chambers to give them a nice round of applause. Vice Mayor Sense, Agenda Item Number Two, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Lance Baker, will you come down and bring your family? This is a big deal. We're going to honor Lance Baker, one of our police officers, or police lieutenant, actually, who just retired. And we'll ask him a few questions, and then we'll read about him. So before we get started, Lance, why don't you go ahead and introduce your family here?
I'm about to retire. I actually retire October 16th, so I've got a couple more weeks to
Oh, really?
Yeah. This is my mom, Linda. That's my brother-in-law, Eric, or Kevin, I'm sorry. Kevin Feig. This is my sister Rhonda. And this is my little nephews, Calvin and Kason. It's my dad, Clayton. And my brother, Leland, who works at the prisons. He's not in prison. He's actually working there.
Thank you. And you want to tell us a little bit about your time on there before I read all these good things you've done?
Well, I've been on for over 20 years. And I started back in 1992. And at the time, I think Gilbert was about 35,000 people. And we're close to about 220,000 now, so I've seen a lot of changes. And I've seen things grow. There are fields that used to be there. They've got all kinds of houses and businesses and stores. It's just a lot of things have changed. But one thing that hasn't changed is a small-town field that we've always had. And it's just an attraction, why people want to live and stay in Gilbert. And it's been an honor to actually work in a city, one of the safest cities in America, and serve the citizens of Gilbert.
Well, you and your fellow officers have been a big part of that safety, so thank you very much for your service. This is a certificate of appreciation to Lance Baker. As mayor of the town of Gilbert, it is John Lewis's distinct pleasure to express sincere appreciation to Police Lieutenant Lance Baker upon his retirement from the Town of Gilbert Police Department. Since 1992, Lance has served the Town of Gilbert and the police profession tirelessly and admirably in many roles. Lieutenant Baker leaves the police department with no less than 57 commendations, recognitions, and awards for his many acts of bravery, heroism, and outstanding performance. His career is a sterling example of dedication and professionalism, and reflects great credit upon himself and the Gilbert Police Department. It is with gratitude and appreciation that we recognize him for his commendable service. As he worked alongside the department's first special investigations team that handled drug investigations and vice crimes, and he oversaw the Police Explorers Program, which educates youth about police operations and functions, Lieutenant Baker's steadfast integrity, sound judgment, and consummate professionalism earned him the highest level of trust, loyalty, and dedication from those who have worked with and for him. His colleagues will remember his unwavering devotion to duty and unparalleled professionalism, earning him the respect of subordinates, peers, and his superiors alike. As Lieutenant Baker brings to a close his distinguished 20 years of service with the police department, the mayor thanks and commends him for his commitment to serving our community. His dedication and strength of character have helped steer Gilbert through its period of rapid growth. Moreover, his wisdom, advice, and friendship have contributed to the betterment of our community and strengthened the Town of Gilbert Police Department. On behalf of the Town Council, the citizens of our community, it is with great respect and gratitude for Lance Baker's service to the people of Gilbert that the mayor extends his appreciation for your outstanding contributions and professional service. Congratulations.
It is my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Leverington, a chemistry teacher at Williamsville High School. He has just returned from a pretty prestigious event that we'd like to tell you about. He was selected to participate in the 2012 Summer Program at the U.S. Space and Rocket Center in Huntsville, Alabama. It's a program designed to provide math and science teachers with advanced teaching techniques and simulated astronaut training. Very fun. On behalf of the Gilbert Town Council and the citizens of our community, we extend our appreciation for the fine publicity Christopher has brought to the Williamsville High School and to our community. We heartily applaud Christopher for his accomplishments and wish him continued great success in the future. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Peterson will now read our October Pillar of the Month: Trustworthiness.
As councilmembers and town staff, we are committed to responding to the needs of the citizens in an honest, reliable, and ethical manner. We have the ability and the responsibility to walk the talk and do what's right.
All right. Our next Agenda item is on Crime Prevention Month. Bill, if you could come forward. You know, our motto here in Gilbert is clean, safe, and vibrant. And some of us like to say, "safe, clean, and vibrant." And it's nice to recognize in October National Crime Prevention Month and to acknowledge some of the efforts that we're going to be doing here in Gilbert. On the screen is a summary of that. I'll kind of go through that in a minute. But is there anything you'd like to -- first introduce yourself, and then is there anything you'd like to cover on this?
Sure. My name's Bill Ballafass. I'm sergeant with the Gilbert Police Department, and I work with the Crime Prevention Unit. And today is, or this month, is our Crime Prevention Month, which we're outlining or headlining two events. Our GAIN, which is Getting Arizona Involved in Neighborhoods, and Red Ribbon Week. Thank you, Chief. And he said I was going to mess that up. And so that's a pledge of all of our youth, our parents, to talk to our youth, those people we have mentors over, to pledge and promise to stay away from drugs. And that's what we really want to highlight today. There's a lot of other events with the Crime Prevention Month, but those are our two highlights.
Great. So as we look at October 20th, which is Make a Difference Day, in the morning there's going to be opportunities for the community to gather and do service projects all over town. And you can go to learn about that on Facebook at For Our City Gilbert. And then that evening, and throughout October, you can join together in block parties as part of GAIN, right? Getting Arizona Involved in Neighborhoods. And as our police department has told us in the past, a good neighbor is one of the most effective crime prevention tools available here in Gilbert. And so I won't read the entire proclamation, but it basically summarizes those opportunities. You can feel free to visit the town website for more information. But we've -- the mayor and council here, by proclamation, are proclaiming that October 24th to October 31st is Red Ribbon Week, and October 20th as Gain Day in Gilbert. And so thank you to the police department and to all of our neighbors for all that you do to keep Gilbert safe, clean, and vibrant. Thank you.
And Bill, I understand, and not while we're in the middle of our council meeting, but as the scouts leave, just try saying Red Ribbon Week fast. It doesn't come out too well, does it? But we're looking forward to it. And it's an emphasis on St. On of Drugs. And then, as mentioned, our Gain Day, where neighborhoods will be coming together as part of our Make a Difference Day. Next on the agenda, there are two proclamations. On the six and seven, they both relate to similar topics. The first proclamation, as noted, is a week without violence. The second proclamation, as noted on our screen, is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We had a tragedy occur in Gilbert in the first week of May. And so this year, as part of our October Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we are adding a few additional activities. As noted, you will see that the town manager has organized with town resources, helping, supplies that will be collected and donated to My Sister's Place, which is a shelter for victims of domestic violence. There will be a Purple Week near the end of October, which is the official color of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. There's a proclamation that Councilmember Cook will read in just a moment. And also, I'll mention the moment of silence in just a minute. We'll be recognizing one of our great advocates, a town resource, and that will also be part of reading the proclamation. There will be a silent witness display. Brochures will be handed out. And team members using our resources on our cable channel, through the media, through our website, will also be emphasizing this important month. With that tragedy, and with what will be happening, and you know, I think it would be nice to read the proclamation first. And I believe we do have some team members that will be here to receive that. If you could please come forward. Could you please introduce yourself?
My name is Shannon Rich. I'm with the Arizona Coalition Against Domestic Violence. Our mission is to lead, to advocate, to educate, to collaborate, to end domestic violence in Arizona. And we represent all the statewide programs that provide services for domestic violence survivors.
Thank you. This is a proclamation that I wish we didn't have to read, but again, we will do so. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. On behalf of John W. Lewis, mayor of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of October Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
And now, if you could, on behalf of, as was stated in the proclamation, those who have suffered and those who are now advocates to try and do our part together as a community so that this does not happen again. If you could please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. We have members of our Gilbert Education Foundation here. If they could please come forward. And our town manager, Patrick Banjo, is going to just mention quickly what a great group this is and some of the things they'll be doing. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to -- I'll save all the great things you're doing for Adalita Severnson and Barb Dwyer, who are here representing the foundation. And they have a brief presentation for us.
Thank you, Patrick, and Mayor Lewis, and members of the Town Council. Thank you for having us tonight to present to you. My name is Adalita Severson, as Patrick said. My day job is a president and CEO of a company here in Gilbert called Bush Tech Incorporated. It's a satellite communications company. But I'm coming to you tonight as president of the Gilbert Education Foundation. I'm also here with Barb Dwyer, who's our executive director. We wanted to come to you tonight to give you an awareness of what we do. We are the fundraising arm for the Gilbert Public Schools and have really sort of changed the way that we've done business. We've been in an organization for the past 10 years. And in the past, when we've done fundraising, it's been very event-based. You know, we've had golf tournaments and dinners and whatnot. And we took the year off last year as a hiatus to kind of sort of turn the tide and look at how we've been doing things. And what we wanted to do, as we looked at what we have done in the past, is we haven't really reached out into the community. The Gilbert Public Schools is an excellent school district. As you know, we've got an A for our grade. And we want to keep it that way. And we want to ensure that whatever we do to help that in improving our town and helping our town with that wonderful educational system, we're passionate about. So tonight, we're just going to, if I can figure this out, just kind of share with you our mission, our story, or give you an idea of the pillars that we stand on, and give you an opportunity and challenge to become a champion and a leader in giving and helping in our cause. Basically, our mission is to create opportunities for the community to invest in Gilbert Public Schools' mission, basically for world-class education. That's the new vision that the board came up with, and to enhance our community through this education. As you know, legislative funding has diminished through the years. And so it's our goal to help with some alternative funding for the Gilbert Public Schools in the ways that Barb will be explaining in the next few minutes. We have 50 slides. Is that okay, Mayor? Just kidding. He's looking at me like, "Oh, my gosh." No. Anyway, so we want to make sure that we create a process to learn, grow, and accomplish, and to serve this legacy. I wanted to kind of go through some of these things. I don't think I have a whole lot of time. We do have a testimonial from, and we have many, from alums that have graduated from Gilbert Public Schools that are doing so well through the scholarships that we've given them and the teacher grants that we've given in the past. And so I'm going to pass it over now to Barb Dwyer to talk to you about the pillars and the buckets, as we call them, that people can give to the cause. Thanks.
Thank you so much. When we reorganized, we wanted to take a look at what we could do to really impact the community. We are going to continue with senior scholarships, which is the first item up there, but we are also adding educator scholarships. And this is not just teacher scholarships. What we're trying to do is we're encouraging our employees of Gilbert Public Schools, which is the largest employer in the town of Gilbert, of about 5,000 people, to continue their education, their professional development. And we know that giving them funds is definitely worth the investment because it goes right back into the classroom. Whether you're an aide wanting to get your teaching credentials, or a teacher wanting to get your doctorate, or whatever it may be, we're looking at all employees to do that. STEM education, that is the hot item. We just had a wonderful ambassador breakfast with the mayor about aerospace engineering. And so what our goal is, is to bring STEM into every single school we have. We have two phenomenal programs. At Desert Ridge High School, we have Project Lead the Way Engineering. And at Campo Verde, we have our Biomed program. We are now in the works with Orbital to bring in aerospace engineering into Mesquite High School. We're very excited about that. And we'll continue working on that. And the town has been instrumental with that as well. And I just like to -- I'm not sure where Dan Henderson is sitting, and Patrick is right here. They have just been so wonderful, along with the mayor, making that connection for us, helping us to build those community bridges. So we really appreciate that. The third area that we are emphasizing is varsity letter. And I've had the pleasure of getting to know Victor Peterson through this process. We are looking at, what we do is we give a varsity letter to any student who does 200 hours or more in community service. This is the same varsity letter you would get for academics or for being on a team. And so we feel this is very important, and we want to teach them to be lifelong learners. And Councilman Peterson actually got to go out to one of our -- we have three schools that are piloting it this year. We have Campo Verde, Desert Ridge, and Highland. And Councilman Peterson, thank you so much for going out and talking. It was inspirational, wasn't it? It really was. So we really want to promote that, that they will become lifelong givers in the community. Our other arm is social services. That has not changed. And we are United Way recipients. Any company that has United Way, they can designate us. And I know United Way has made a huge change. You no longer have to have a code and put that code in there. If you are a 501(c)(3), you may be a benefit of their funding. And you can get involved with that. One of the things I do want to point out is the biggest contributors in the past 10 years to the Gilbert Education Foundation has been its employees. Even though it is not a hugely high-paying profession, they always give back. And last year, we had over 300 students that were considered homeless last year in Gilbert Public Schools. So we want to meet those financial needs. And today, we found out we already have over 100 already documented this year. So we do everything from the extreme. We have families that have been in cars, that we've gotten out of their cars and into residence, to where perhaps spouses become unemployed, and therefore we help them with maybe a medical bill, things like that. We have a wonderful group of people that do distribute those funds. And it's just a great program that we do. And it's taking care of our own. And I think that's what we try to do, as well as direct them to services. And our last one, which is really important, is our Gilbert Public School alumni. And I challenge all of you, please raise your hand if you graduated from a Gilbert High School, any Gilbert High School. Well, you need to go on the website and register because we are pooling together all of the graduates of Gilbert Public Schools. It is very exciting. We're coming up on our 100th year anniversary for Gilbert Public Schools, June 2013. So beginning in January, there'll be all kinds of events going on, and teaching in the classroom, and just bringing together our community. And I think that's what's so important about what we want to And I think that's what's so important about what we want to do now. We really want to bring the community together. So I will go back to Adalita.
Oh, you're going to make me talk about this? So we are on a campaign right now that we started two weeks ago to raise $175,000, asking community members and community leaders, businesses, to kind of join on our bandwagon at whatever level that they want to give. So I'm not going to go through this, but I wanted to challenge all of you to be sort of leaders and role models of the community, and to go onto our website to, you know, help us to give. The other way that we want your help is through networking. I'm sorry.
Adalita, if you could, let's go back one and make sure we get that website written down.
Sorry. It's www.gefaz.org.
Okay, and our internal team members have already written that down, and we'll get that on our town website, too. Thank you. Continue.
Well, I can stay on this and talk about, but we do have a lot of legacy giving. We are now affiliated with the Arizona Community Foundation, so anytime anybody wants to give, we've had a lot of people sort of asking, well, do you, you know, do you take land? Do you take, you know, could we put you in our will? We do have the resources to do that. In addition, what was I going to say? Anyway, we've had, in the two weeks that we just started our campaign, we have already raised $30,000, so we would like to thank all of you who have given. So as far as networking, we wanted to help you, ask you to help us to spread our word, whether it be, you know, referring people to us and just talking about the foundation and, you know, just, you know, at a cocktail party, hey, have you found out, you know, do you know about the Gilbert Education Foundation? Anything like that would help us. And of course, the website, wanted to give you a snapshot of what it looked like, so when you get there, you knew you were there. But thank you for your time. If you have any questions or anybody has any questions, we'll certainly be here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. And I notice our Gilbert School District Superintendent Dave Allison is here, too, cheering the two of you on, and thank you, Dave, for being here. I also just received a note on our agenda item number six. We did have some individuals here to receive that. Deana, if you can come forward, and others. Let's have a quick picture taken with Deana then. As I present this proclamation, if you could introduce yourself, I understand for our community to also know that because of your services and great effort related to domestic violence, that you will be recognized in a few weeks with a Community Excellence Award. So please introduce yourself, Deana.
Hi, I'm Deana Aguilera, and I'm the victim advocate for the town prosecutor's office.
Vice Mayor Sins, will I come forward? Did we have any communication from citizens?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one. I'll let you read it.
Is this Patrick, who would like to help us learn pronunciation, please? The name is Patrick Baner. If you can state your name and whether you're a Gilbert resident, for the record, please.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Patrick Baner. I am a Gilbert resident. I am here today before you, because this is what happens when you miss meetings, and your mayor has a birthday right around a council meeting. I would like to say, Mayor, I'm glad my evaluation is done, so this can't show up until next year. Without any further ado, I think we have a presentation for you.
Chief Dorn, I understand there's a town ordinance that the mayor's birthday cannot be celebrated a day late, and those that try and do so are to be sent to prison or something. Oh, look at this. And official candy bars.
Would you like to narrate for us, Mayor?
Oh, well, what is being handed to me are Snicker bars, which for the scouts to know that by proclamation, the Snickers bar is the official candy bar of Gilbert. And I do see a few family pictures up there, and... Oh, thank you.
Does Lucinda know that's actually your second Snicker bar of the day?
No, sir, and don't get me in the penalty box. Now, for the town council, with all of these Snicker bars up here, only one per agenda item. Do not try and eat two at one time. Thank you. Thank you, and it was a wonderful opportunity to have another birthday, and I feel just as young as possible, but thank you. Any other communication from the citizens?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
The council members, I think, are about to be spoiled, though they'll be asking for cake and candy bars every meeting.
You know, Mayor, you'll have to remove that sign that says, "No food allowed in the..."
That's right.
Do we have a waiver today?
Is there a motion? No. We can't do a motion. It's not on the agenda, is it?
Oh, we're getting in trouble.
Okay.
The tiny worst birthday host ever. You have cards here. Let me forget to give you.
Thank you. I humbly and graciously accept. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. As listed, all items are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed to the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under single motion. Vice Mayor Sins, what requests do we have?
I have none, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda with the following changes. It would be items nine through 20. We are pulling items 10 and 14, and we are adding items 23, 26, 27, and question, oh, okay. Yeah, and 27 is continued to the meeting of October 25th.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second. Please vote. That's, that motion is approved with a seven vote. Thank you. Now, to the council, we talked in the study session about moving 10 and 14 to administrative items, but I also realize there may be individuals here that are waiting for us to proceed, and so I'll look for some direction. We could proceed with 10 and 14 now, or we could wait for administrative items. Do it now? I have a do-it-now and wait. Councilmember Cooper?
Well, I mean, I, no, it doesn't really matter, but we don't have that large of a public hearing agenda tonight, so.
So public hearing first is your, okay. Let's do that. So 10 and 14, because we said that in the study session, we'll move to the public hearing. We'll do public hearing first. And Vice Mayor Sins, just in preparation for reading this, do we have any requests to speak on 21 or 22?
Mayor, I have not seen any. Has staff gotten any?
Okay, thank you.
No slips, sir.
As noted on the agenda, items 21 and 22 will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on a public hearing item may do so. Comments will be heard for those in support of or in opposition to an item. Because we do not have any requests, I will go ahead and open the public hearing on agenda items 21 and 22. And before closing, we could have some council discussion right now, or I could close it, and then we could proceed. Do any council members wish to have discussion on 21 and 22? I close the public hearing on those two agenda items, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve items 21 and 22.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion is approved with a seven vote. Thank you. Moving to administrative items, we will go to agenda item 10 from, that was listed on the consent calendar. And who was it who requested 10? Councilmember Peterson, do you have some specific questions or comments?
Mayor, I have a somewhat lengthy comment. Forgive me for that. I do like to be thorough. I actually think for quite a few hours about some of these things. I want to make sure that I'm doing the right thing, and that's hard work sometimes. So first of all, I don't know if we might want to do a quick presentation on what the item is, so people have some context. So I'll go ahead and do that first, if that's...
Yes, please. That would be great.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jessica Fierro, and I'm the community development supervisor for the town. Item 10 before you is an accountability contract that staff is requesting to enter into with a nonprofit called The Leadership Center. We've been partners with The Leadership Center for quite a few years, and The Leadership Center provides educational classes for homeowners' associations. They provide solvit mediation services at a reduced cost for residents to resolve neighborhood disputes, and they also offer other educational opportunities about leadership in the community. The contract is for $15,000, and that is to provide all of those services for a one-year contract term.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I had previously heard the argument that we have some obligation towards training, helping to train HOA board members as we basically force people, or force developers to create HOAs. So I argued that we didn't force them. But I have to say that when I previously argued that developers are choosing to create HOAs rather than being forced by the town to, I was only partly correct. In fact, as I've researched this issue more fully, I've found that there's no clean answer to the question. It's going to take a few minutes, but I would like to share as succinctly as possible what I learned and what conclusions I've drawn from it. Let's start whether or not, with whether or not developers are forced to create HOAs. If a developer decides to develop without creating commonly-owned property, and the development isn't adjacent to an arterial, then no HOA is required. This is a pretty rare case, so that's the first scenario. So there is a scenario. If the property owner is adjacent to an arterial, then the developer will be required to dedicate right-of-way, improve it, which includes landscaping, and maintain it. And even if the developer doesn't create commonly-owned property, the town will require the creation of an HOA to maintain the landscaping in the right-of-way that they previously dedicated. So that's the second scenario. The final scenario is if the developer does decide to create commonly-owned property, obviously, an HOA is required, but it goes even further than that. Once common areas are created, the town imposes its design guidelines on those areas, which may result in more complicated management needs going forward. The bottom line is that in many, if not most, cases, the town not only requires HOA formation, but complicates the management work that falls on that HOA. Now, that's what the town does, but what should the town do? All I can offer is my opinion, of course, but I do believe it's appropriate to force property owners to take responsibility for their own rainwater runoff, and that's really the impetus behind some of the fundamentals in this. After all, you do have the right to use and enjoy your property as you please, as long as it doesn't interfere with someone else's right to do the same. But flooding your neighbor's property certainly interferes with the use of their property and can even damage or destroy it. So if a property owner chooses to make smaller lots that are insufficient to have on-lot retention, which is where the rainwater is retained on their lot, then they are responsible for where that rainwater will go, which is usually handled by a retention basin that is commonly owned because it serves multiple properties. I believe it is appropriate, it is appropriate in this case, to force the formation of some kind of mechanism that is at least sufficient to maintain that area to perform that basic function of retention. Now, if there's another practical way to hold those property owners accountable for their own rainwater, besides creating an entity like an HOA, I'd love to hear it, but I don't, there's some legal difficulties withholding them severally liable. In short, in my opinion, there's a big difference between what, but if you'll notice, there's a big difference between what the town does and what it should do, and in short, I think the current policy is wrong. However, I still believe it's wrong to force citizens who don't live in an HOA to subsidize the operation of HOAs. Does it solve one injustice to create another injustice? Do two wrongs make a right? I believe the better approach is to address each injustice directly and correct it, rather than overlook one injustice in exchange for creating another. So in short, I don't think we should continue to subsidize the HOAs or force citizens to do so. But in an effort to compromise, and in light of the fact that the issue is much more cloudy than I had previously thought, I would like to look at at least going in the right direction by more seriously examining staff's previous recommendation that they gave September 20th as item number 13. And so that's kind of what I would propose moving forward, is to adopt that recommendation, but I'm open to other suggestions from the council.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I asked staff to, I had two questions with staff that I asked. One of the questions I asked was really the documentation receipt in study session where they showed the surrounding municipalities and how they handled the, you know, the HOAs and so forth. And what was intriguing to me was the Chandler line item, where it showed that the city of Chandler did not fund any money to any organization for that purpose. But I did also receive an email from staff that I do have a question here pertaining to what Chandler does with the grants. So can you share with me a little bit more information about these grants? Because they don't identify where they're from. I don't know if they're state, if I don't know if they're private, I don't know if they're federal. And do these grants actually supplement the organizations that provide the training for the residents in Chandler?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, the grants that Chandler offers are general fund dollars that the Neighborhood Services staff administer through a Neighborhood Services Committee. And traditional neighborhoods that don't have HOAs can apply for these grants, and the types of things that they use the funds for are more for community safety and improvement. So they can put in speed bumps, they can change some of their lighting, it could be for block watch signs, things like that. So the grants that Chandler offers are separate from their HOA and educational classes.
All right. The other question that I had was, I was going back to Councilmember Peterson's comment about going back to the original $10,000 agreement, was that there was an explanation to the council that there was a reduction in the number of Gilbert attendees, or Gilbert resident attendees, and that they made the original recommendation, because there was a reduction from year to year to year, that they were able to say, let's go to 10,000. I did ask staff to actually show me the historical data, and I did not receive that, so I can't, I don't have any facts to see if there's been a reduction from the last three years. And I wish I had that, because that would have helped me in my decision process-making. Now, with that being said...
Let me just check with Jessica. So I know that there was a memo that came that gave statistics for a certain time period. I thought that that was for at least the last three years. Does that sound right?
Mayor, are you referring to the communication received today or at the previous study session? Mayor, are you referring to the communication received today or at the previous study session?
Previous study session.
The information that was given at the previous study session was for HOA attendance for just the past fiscal year.
Okay, past year.
It did not have three years' worth of data.
And so you were looking for more than-
But it's not Gilbert. It's not, it didn't answer my question.
So Councilmember Daniels, is that the one for the past year?
We have the one for the past three years that was provided to us, but it's my understanding they don't specifically track residents as far as community of residents. It's, these classes are in partnership, and I think this is the key, Mayor, and I, this is what I most appreciate about this. We have 76,000 households in the town of Gilbert. It is inevitable that one or more will have a need for education in their neighborhoods. These classes are open to all residents, HOA or not. Some of the classes are targeted towards HOA board members, some of them are just targeted to neighbors and neighborhoods in their entirety. And there's a huge education piece that we know through our crime prevention programs, through Neighborhood Watch, there's a huge education piece that has the ability to stop altercations before they occur, and that helps us in our other enforcement areas, be it our police, be it the mediation. There are so many opportunities for us to bring together, and that's what I appreciate most about The Leadership Center. I am in full support of the contract as it's been presented to us. I think we get a lot for our dollar. I think this is a wise use of taxpayer dollars, and I feel like with the numerous emails, substantial quantity of information that's been provided to us about what goes on in these particular, specifically in regards to this $15,000 contract, we have more than sufficient information to make a decision today, and I'm very much in support of the, both the concept and the contract. I think it's essential to the community.
Mayor? Thank you. Vice Mayor Sins?
Yeah, I'd like to take some exceptions to what we heard earlier from Councilmember Neighborhoods, the zoning code in the town of Gilbert requires open space. It requires a certain percent of open space for any development in the town of Gilbert. When you have that open space, it must be maintained, whether you're on an arterial or not. So therefore, who's going to maintain that? And that's one of the reasons why an HOA is formed. I've lived in a small community of 60 homes for 26 years. The community is 28 years old, and we have spent conservatively over that 28 years, over $1 million in maintaining our arterials, the landscaping along the arterials, the sprinklers that are required, and the private streets that we have. So when you talk about subsidies, I am subsidizing the residents and my neighbors, subsidizing the residents of Gilbert because the town of Gilbert does not have to pay to maintain our landscape or our streets. So for a mere $15,000 to educate the members of HOAs or any of the residences, Councilmember Daniels said, you always talk about return on investment, this is incalculable. Maybe you've got free computers there and you can figure it out, but I can't even begin to calculate the return on the investment. So this is the right thing to do, and so I'm totally in support of this.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah, I'm not going to enter the debate about HOAs, which I think is not necessarily part of the agenda today anyway, but I will say that I did the math, and really $5,000 is at question here, not 15. And with 225,000 residents, I think it's something like 2 cents per resident, and so I can't believe that we would spend, you know, a half hour or multiple meetings to keep talking about it. I think it was nice of the staff to bring us some concerns earlier, and I appreciated that. I think it opened up an opportunity for dialogue with The Leadership Center. And what we have before us tonight is an improved contract, there's better accountability, there's stronger marketing efforts, which I think is part of what was lacking before and why you might have seen lower attendance counts than we would like. So now we have a commitment both on behalf of the town of Gilbert as well as the Leadership Center to upgrade or enhance our efforts, and I'm fully in support and fully in support of moving on to the next agenda item.
I have attended several of the sessions, and while a couple have been very specific to HOA concerns, they were still applicable and appropriate for anyone, but some of the classes have been very much focused on what was mentioned, neighbors getting along and neighbors addressing issues and helping give suggestions of how to overcome challenges, and that was the setting where anyone was involved. With what was mentioned with our gain as part of Make a Difference Day, I think too, I note from our police department that one of the most effective safety tools we have in the town of Gilbert is neighbors knowing each other. And so when we do have opportunities for neighbors to have ways to interact, learn from each other, I think that is a positive. We do have to the seven council members a request to speak on this item from a citizen, and because it's now an administrative item section, this is where, in following the agenda, I receive counsel on whether you are ready to have the citizen speak. So Vice Mayor Sins, please.
Patricia Krueger. Please state your name and municipality of residence, please.
And you will be given up to three minutes to share your thoughts.
My name is Patricia Krueger. I am a Gilbert resident and have been a resident for many, many years. I have attended several of The Leadership Center's educational sessions as well as public sessions, and they are by far the greatest tool I, as a resident of this community, have really had the pleasure of experiencing. Several years ago, our HOA invited the water conservation person from the town of Gilbert to speak based on a meeting that they had had with The Leadership Center. They had gone to an educational session he put on, and let me tell you, for the next year, our board was approving landscape changes based on that poor man having to run around in our HOA recommending desert-tolerant plants. So at a minimum, that saved the town a lot of water use, it saved our HOA residents, it even saved the county island residents who lived behind us, who saw a lot of the activity going on. So to say that Leadership Center only impacts HOAs is absolutely not true. As a community member of the town of Gilbert, I certainly don't itemize things that I don't use, and I don't present the council a listing with that itemization indicating I shouldn't be charged for these things I don't use. As a community member, I expect that I am charged for things that I don't use because that is my right and my privilege as a member of this community. So to indicate that regardless of the 76,000 homes, a portion of them may not be directly impacted and therefore should not pay 2 cents, which I have brought my 2 cents and I will be handing that over for this contract, because I find it absolutely implorable that this is even a conversation. $15,000, $20,000, if you paid $100,000 for their services, they have given it back tenfold to this community. So I highly, highly recommend that you continue to support not The Leadership Center, but the community residents of this community, because we are the ones who are benefiting from their hard work, their dedicated service to this community, and I thank you, and I'm handing my 2 cents over.
Thank you. From the council, any other comments before I entertain a motion? Councilmember Cook?
I didn't finish my second point. Well, I think I'd like to say is that I'm not against the content of the material in the course. I believe that it does have wonderful content. What I'm concerned about is that the number of individuals, when you do the dollar per individual, that's why I wanted to find out the information, is there to me is the issue because it sounds like the dollar per individual for the last three years has increased because we have lower attendance. So that to me was really kind of the driving, it's nothing with the content, and as I agree with Councilmember Daniels, I believe the services that are provided is a very big benefit. It's really, I have nothing against the content of what the Leadership Committee, it's more about the funding aspect of that. And the reason why I bring that up is to give an example. When the town of Gilbert was doing lots and lots of permits, we had lots and lots of planners on staff, but as the permits decreased, we didn't maintain all those planners, we had to make adjustments to staff. So again, I'm thinking from a business perspective, if the dollar per resident attends the classes dropping, I was very much in favor of the original $10,000. And I don't believe any of the dollars was subtracted as related to the legal services from the last contract versus this one. Those were maintained, which I'm very grateful for.
Thank you. So in summary, I think Councilmember Peterson, you'd probably refer back to a prior potential motion. Councilmember Cook, it might even be that you would want it to be continued to another meeting so you could get that information, and I appreciate those comments. I do think that all seven of us have reached out and have requested information, that's been helpful, and the end result, as understood, is to do additional marketing to increase those numbers is part of the commitment. And then I heard from at least three others that you're probably ready to proceed, so I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve item 10 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Please?
I move to amend and substitute this recommendation with the one on September 20th that was item 13 from the staff.
Is there a second for that?
I second.
Can you bring an item from a previous agenda?
Just need to state what it is. Oh, the only change was 10,000 of the 15. Why don't you make that motion?
I move to amend the contract to remove the support of the Congress of Neighborhoods and the HOA classes and also subtract $5,000 from the contract.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, please vote. That is not approved with five no's and two in favor, and so we return to the original motion, which has a motion and a second to it. Please vote. And as approved with the five to vote. Thank you. We also, on the administrative items-
14, Mayor.
Yes, 14. And who wished to have 14 discussed?
Councilmember Cook.
Councilmember Cook, please. And we did have our presentation, the study session, so Bill, why don't we, if you could come forward, please introduce yourself. We already had the presentation, but if you could give the 20-second overview of what Agenda Item 14 is all about for the public, those in council chambers tonight, and then I'll ask Councilmember Cook to question or comment that he may have. Please.
Mayor Lewis, council. Bill Cohn, Fleet Business Manager, Town of Gilbert.
And Agenda Item 14 is the purchase of some vehicles.
Purchase of 10 police vehicles.
Thank you.
Combination of utility and sedan vehicles.
Thank you. And we discussed that in the study session in more detail. Additional information has been provided. Thank you so much. And Councilmember Cook, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the pleasure to go hang out with Bill yesterday, and as we may remember, a number of months ago, the council also had something similar with fleet vehicles, and I decided to do a field trip and visited those vehicles, and I think I may have shared that some of the vehicles, the doors were literally hanging on, the hinges were about, in fact, they were ready to take a picture of me opening a door because it would have fell off and it would be my fault that we had to get a new vehicle. But anyways, I went out and saw a handful of the PD vehicles that were on the list and ones that were not on the list, and some of the ones that were not on the list were actually about a year older. So I asked a question to Bill. Can you share with me, you know, how we came up, you know, scientifically, how did we come up to justify that these vehicles needed to be, you know, replaced? And Bill shared with me that he, in his prior job with ADOT, had a wonderful process that I thoroughly enjoyed, and he's hoping to roll that out here fairly soon, and I kept on thinking to myself, if we may have, can extend this a little bit longer to allow him to implement that process, then there would probably be a good way for me to feel that we've justified thoroughly the replacement of these vehicles.
Do we need to have Bill explain that process or? Councilmember Daniels, please.
I just think maybe he should roll it out when he's ready to present. He probably has a-
Okay, thank you. It sounded like you would be ready to proceed, and then with that suggestion, after it's ready to be rolled out, we'd like to hear about it, whether in an email or memo or something. Councilmember Cook?
And if we remember the last time something like this came up, I had chatted about the concept of instead of doing the miles, that really is more about the hours, the hours that the, you know, the engine was working and all the mechanics. That would be a better measurement than the number of miles, and I had thought that we may have had that policy implemented from the last, that one council meeting moving forward, and it doesn't sound 100% that we're there. So again, I strongly would obviously recommend that instead of basing it upon the miles, based upon what we're seeing in our council packet, years and miles, that really is more about hours.
Thank you. Bill, the, so the policy that's mentioned, how soon might you be presenting it to town leadership?
Mayor Lewis, council. That's something we're working on right now, and I'll be presenting it within the next three months.
Okay, three months. All right. That's a key time duration that might take me back to Councilmember Daniels, and so Councilmember Peterson?
I guess my question is, would that three-month delay be detrimental? Can we wait the three months to get better information, more thorough information? I'm always in favor of that, if that's possible, so.
Bill, please.
Mayor Lewis, council. The process that we discussed and as well as the hour meter on the vehicles, it's unique on these particular vehicles because of the, the officers do spend a great deal of time in the vehicle, and it's idling much more. I would say about five times as much as a similar car driven by the rest of us or in another application. So currently with the Ford models, they don't offer the hour meter to use. The 2008 models on up have the hour meter, so we will be using that for those particular, for this type of vehicle in the future. We do use the hour meters for our backhoes and other equipment that, various equipment that we use out there that doesn't rely on a speedometer. So we'd like to implement that fully. As well, back to the procedure, it would be based on the industry standard of miles and hours. It's really a life cycle cost analysis where the depreciation of the vehicle, where it intersects with the maintenance costs, that is the ideal time to replace it. But some vehicles are unique, and there needs to be a full inspection. You might have a lemon, the miles are much less than the actual cutoff or recommended cutoff point, and you have a lemon, you spend a great deal of resources keeping that vehicle on the road. Well, that would come up prior to the mileage or the years. Or you could have just the opposite. Some of the vehicles we use in different applications, for example, the water or streets, they get very low miles. So the cutoff point, we may go way beyond that with regards to years, so the inspection would be critical.
Bill, when we retire a vehicle, what happens to it?
We'll take it to a public auction.
Okay. And I think these are helpful discussions, and Town Energy Manager, please.
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, I think to answer your question, the program that Bill is describing about putting in place, would that impact our decision tonight? It would not. I would respectfully request the council to move forward on this purchase. All of these vehicles have extremely high miles due to the nature of the lag times and the ordering- the ordering process, and then having them outfitted with the proper equipment, they will probably have an additional 20,000 miles on them by the time they are here and ready for service. And by delaying it three months, we would still be replacing all of these 10 vehicles. So I would request that we move forward.
Thank you. And to Councilmember Cook, I wanted to thank you for your comments, too, that we are very familiar with policies that large companies put in place related to computers, and often it's a set time period, a computer's still working fine, and yet the computer's replaced. And yet sometimes you try and drag it on. I think our police department would work with this if need be, but our town managers just brought up a key point to me, that I am not sure if I want to run the risk of having it go even farther for a public safety vehicle, and we'd like to give them the best tools. Realizing there's still some salvage value, there's still some money that can come back, and so I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to say something before.
Vice Mayor, sentence?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but an hour on each car, the hours are different depending on the use of the vehicle, aren't they?
That is correct.
So if some car is involved in several high-speed chases or whatever, compared to the chief's car, it'd be a lot different in the number of hours and miles. So I think what you've done is do the intersection of value versus repair cost, and apparently that's what you've made your decision on. Is that correct?
That is correct.
But we all know the chief isn't a Sunday driver, so.
Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Daniels.
I just had, I want to make sure I'm clear and understand. So you talked about how some vehicles are unique, and inspection has to take place in order to evaluate that particular vehicle. Are you satisfied, in your professional opinion, that those inspections have taken place, and that we're making the right decision replacing these vehicles now?
My professional opinion on these vehicles are, they are at the optimum point for replacement.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 14 as it's been presented.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, please vote. That's approved with a seven of a vote, thank you. Hundred administrative items, we also have 24 and 25, which will, Don, we'll have you move forward with those two items, please. And if you could, for the public, introduce the topics.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Don Irvine, the Budget Administrator, Budget Manager here for the Town of Gilbert. The items we have before you tonight are twofold. We have one item that is, and they're both related to the fiscal year 1112 budget. Fiscal year ended on June 30th of 2012. We'd like to go through and request some budget adjustments, end-of-year adjustments be made to reflect some changes that occurred over the course of the year, and we'll go through those. And then we'd like to summarize with an end-of-year budget report for the council. While that's probably pretty difficult to see up on the screen, we do have this item in the council packet, and it's available online for the viewing public as well. We have up here a number of different items that we're requesting some budget adjustments for the fiscal year. One of the things that we have discussed in great detail over the course of the last year, and actually nearly two years now, were some changes that have occurred through the budget process and through the town's processes as a whole. On November the 5th of 2011, council adopted financial policies that differed greatly from processes that had been used in the past. Some of them actually just simply memorialized the current processes, and others made some changes. One of those changes was related to the way that we budget for information primarily, and the way that we transfer those budgets throughout the course of the year. As council knows, when we adopt the tentative budget for the following fiscal year, we also adopt the maximum allowable budget for the town as a whole. Council can change that budget within those allowable standards, but we wouldn't increase the budget overall. What the November 5th, 2011 adoption of those financial policies did was restrict the way in which we do those transfers. So we need to bring those back to council for approval. What you see before you today can be categorized in three primary ways. First of all, while there were no merit increases or cost of living adjustments to the staff on an ongoing basis for the fiscal year 2012, the council did approve a one-time adjustment in lieu of a merit increase for the staff members. We were able to, within the total salary savings at each fund level, there was salary savings enough to cover that, but they weren't necessarily in the particular departments. So the first category that I draw your attention to would be those. For those departments, such as the fire department, that didn't have vacancies, their, the salaries then were over their allowable budget. So we are asking for a budget adjustment to cover those costs, and we can do so again within the existing salary savings for each of those respective funds. The second one that I would draw your attention to is related to the special revenue funds. Now, we have many special revenue funds, and it makes up the majority of the list that you see before you. Each of those special revenue funds, as it would sound, comes with its own funding source and can only be used for a very legally restricted purpose. In many cases, we're talking about donations. So these are donations that come in for a specific purpose, and then are used by the town to fulfill that purpose. In the past, we were able to make those adjustments internally as a staff. We'll be budgeting for those through the budget process moving forward. So we do need, we are requesting of council to make those adjustments for transparency and clarity's sake for fiscal year 2012. Finally, as we, as we look at, excuse me, the other large one that I'd like to draw your attention to up there, you'll see some very large numbers in regards to debt service. We did not issue new bonds, but we did have the ability to refinance some of our bond issues, saving the town considerable money over the life of those bonds. In so doing, as the funds traveled through the town and then back out again, it did become public funds, and we do need to acquire the authorization to do so. Because we have contingency available within the CIP to allow for projects or improvement districts that may come up mid-year, we have, again, that budget authorization or the appropriation, and we would like to then make that budget adjustment, again, for transparency moving into the future. So those are the three primary categories of budget transfers that we're asking for tonight. Additionally, you'll see on there a couple of specific items. As you get toward the bottom of this list, in CIP administration, and then there are two other items on the other side. The CIP administration, council adopted the Arcadis contract for fiscal year 2012. There was an increase associated with that contract. We did not ask for the appropriation at that time, and we are within our current processes now coming to council within the council communication to ask not just for the contract approval, but the corresponding budget adjustment. So this would make that budget hole for the Arcadis contract for, again, last fiscal year. We had some additional expenses in the riparian preserve that were not budgeted for. Again, there's new processes this year. Staff would be coming to council in advance of those expenses moving forward to ensure that the authorization was in place. And then finally, we did have, within the downtown redevelopment area, an opportunity to demolish a property that needed to occur. We didn't have the budget authorization in that particular fund, so we are asking for the budget adjustment to, again, to reflect the appropriation for our records for last fiscal year. So Mayor, the one additional item that I would like to point out to council before a motion is made, there is an error on the document itself, as you see down here in the staff recommendation. I was, I think, in the mode of the current fiscal year, and it does date fiscal year 2012-13, I would ask that the council consider a motion for fiscal year 1112.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, sentence?
Don, all of these changes still keep us within the legal amount that we've approved previously?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's an excellent question. It absolutely does. We are able to simply use appropriate, existing appropriation that we had, again, for those general fund items within salary savings from other departments. We can use those towards those that did not have vacancies. The large dollar amounts for the debt service, because we did have the ability to allow for an improvement district should one have occurred, we recommend using that contingency for that purpose.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Don, just to be sure I'm clear, this is really about abiding by the financial policies and coming to council for anything that's coming from contingency above a certain dollar amount, and that's what we're seeing here. And what you're saying is, in the future, we'll be getting those one at a time as they come up, rather than as a large list. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, you will be seeing those as we go along. There may be some cleanup items again at the end of the year, but this is absolutely to abide with those financial policies. One that we've identified, for example, moving, as we budgeted for this fiscal year, we did budget for the special revenue funds, but as this was a new process, we've already identified that we would make some changes moving forward, so you'll probably see those come to you at the end of the year as well.
Thank you. Other discussion? So for Agenda 24, are we prepared? And I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the end-of-year budget adjustments for FY 2011 and 2012, as outlined in the staff communication.
Second.
If there's a motion, a second, please vote. That's approved with a seven of a vote, thank you. Don, let's move to the next Agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to put forward to the Mayor and Council the end-of-year budget report. The format that I'm about to share with you reflects the, I wanted to bring to you, though, before those budget adjustments have been made. We'll make those budget adjustments and bring back a corrected copy. The overall sum of those actions will still be exactly the same, but I wanted to show you exactly where they were coming from for transparency again. First, I'd like to draw your attention to the revenues for the end of the year, for fiscal year 2012. As we saw throughout the course of the year, and even beginning just before fiscal year 2012, revenues had begun to recover, and we were very fortunate that they were able to recover at a fairly steady base. While we are not necessarily back to levels that we had seen in the past, nor do we expect to be, because we did see quite a spike in years around 2006 and 2007. As you can see here, though, on our general fund, operating in April, as we presented to council our year-end estimates, we had looked at about $111.9 million in total general fund revenues. The budget for fiscal year 2012-13 was based off of this number. With continued increases, primarily in our sales tax areas, and some considerable development revenues that we saw in permit activities specific to the general fund, we actually saw those revenues come in at $113.6 million. So there is an increase above and beyond what we had budgeted for planning for the fiscal year 2012. Looking at the water operating fund, well, actually, before I move on, I'd like to ask if there are any questions regarding the general fund revenues.
Please proceed.
As you see on the water operating fund, we did come in under budget on the revenues. What you'll see in just a moment, though, is we're significantly under budget on expenditures as well. There were some conversations with the Public Works Department about some of those driving factors. We did see changes in behavior. Part of that was due to some of the weather activities as well, so we just saw some lower activities in water overall. So we saw a reduction, not only in the revenues, but a significant reduction in the expenditures as well. With that, though, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that council has regarding the revenues.
As Vice President said, this is good news. Councilmember Peterson?
I just had a question about the repair and replacement expense. Can you talk to us about why we were so far under?
On the revenue, sir?
No, are we not talking about expenditures yet?
Not just yet.
Oops.
Okay, proceed.
But if there are no further questions, I think that's an excellent segue.
That is a good segue.
Again, as we look at, look to the expenses for ending in fiscal year 2012, the numbers that you see up there are the, basically, you see that we are under budget overall in all of our fund areas. Again, as we do those budget adjustments, it would be within those areas, so the net total that you see up there will not change as the result of the council action on item number 24. What you do see there on the general fund expenditures, we budgeted $104.8 million. The actuals came in at $101.7 million. So we did have some savings overall in the total general fund expenditures. And similarly, and most, almost most remarkably, on the water operating fund, again, as we mentioned just a moment ago, we're nearly $10 million under budget in our total expenditures. Part of that is in operating, part of that is in items that are carried forward that were not completed during fiscal year 2012. On the repair and replacement, this is a continuation of some conversations that we had had earlier on, where many things that would normally be programmed for repair and replacement, and as you heard under item number 14, were really postponed or deferred for a period of time. As we looked, as we entered a recession, and especially as that seemed to draw on, we deferred as much replacement as we reasonably could do. And so we're starting to see some of that come back. But now, all of those items that are potentially up for replacement, we're not really going to see those come all at once. We do budget them in the respective areas. Again, as you heard before, there's a great deal of analysis and assessment that goes on within each of those operating areas to determine which of those items need to be repaired or replaced first. And so I think we will continue to see, moving forward, perhaps, under expenditures in those budgeted items, but we do want to ensure that we have them fully budgeted so that those that need to be replaced can be. Any other questions on the expenditures?
Councilmember Cook?
Don, can you explain the budget savings number and why that's negative?
The budget savings number that you see there, this is also reflective of some changes in processes. The budget savings number that you see up there was an actual budget of a negative number, and that's why you see it up there as a negative budget, as well as a negative overall, where the variance is negative as well. And I know that sounds rather confusing.
Well, because I'm thinking, are you budgeting a negative savings?
No, we were actually budgeting a negative budget. Allow me to explain.
Yeah, can you please explain?
Absolutely.
We're a positive organization. I don't know if I can have all these negatives, but try and explain.
I'm trying to think, you would like to have a positive savings when you start off, and I was just kind of curious.
Well, it does, it's a double negative which becomes a positive, exactly right. So now that we have the anticipation build up on this, this is simply a reflection of what we had anticipated in salary savings overall. And so where we had budgeted that in the past, as we looked to the budget process for fiscal year 1213, we decided instead of budgeting those savings as an overall negative to reduce the overall budget, we would budget the full amount for all of the positions, not reduce it, but show it in the year-end estimates, so that we have the full legal appropriation in place for those expenditures, but that we continue to update council and the public on where we actually expect to end the year. So it was that differentiation between reducing the overall legal authority by that amount to reflect those salary savings, and showing that in the financial models instead. So for last fiscal year, we budgeted a negative overall number at the fund level to reduce the total budget to reflect our anticipated savings. We did not do that for the current fiscal year, so you will not see that in the upcoming reports.
So when we go into the next year, are we going to see another negative?
You will not see another negative. Again, that negative was put in place simply to reduce the overall budget to account for our anticipated savings.
Okay. I do have just a comment, which, to me, I have to thank the town. When they budgeted for literally $250 million, and they come back with $34 million savings, that is unbelievable to me. So to the staff, Patrick, your town, it's just unbelievable that $34 million were not needed for this last fiscal year.
Mayor? Councilmember Peterson?
I just want to confirm this. It's more of a, let's celebrate this together, but I'm looking at about a $12 million surplus in the general fund. Is that right?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments? And you have some more? Or are you ready for us to do a motion?
Mayor, I can answer any questions that you'd have. I'm happy to go into any level of detail, as the council is, pleasure.
I will entertain a motion.
I motion that we accept the budget.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, please vote. Thank you, Don, that's approved with a seven of a vote. We move to Agenda Item 28, the Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports. Please, Vice Mayor, sentence.
Just wanted to comment, we had a Just wanted to comment, we had, last night was one of the longest planning commission meetings we've had in some time, and we had a use permit on there. And I want to compliment the residents that came and spoke. They were professional, courteous, and passionate. So at the end of the night, both on both sides of it, positive and negative, and Councilmember Cook attended as well. And so at the end of the night, I'm very proud of the planning commission we have, the members, their thought process, they really think through the issues, and I want to compliment them. It was approved on a four-two vote, and there's potential we'll see it on an appeal. But I really applaud the job that the commission did. I think we got out of here about 11 o'clock last night, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
I want to thank, I'm beating the same thing with Vice Mayor Sins. Last night, we had, it was a full house, literally. There were two particular agenda items where a lot of residents, both for and against, were very passionate. But the one thing that was extremely noticeable was the wonderfulness of respect for others. It was very clear that even though we may disagree, but we agree that we can disagree and get along and respect each other. That was probably the beauty of last night. And again, the commissioners, the staff just did a wonderful job in managing what could have been very volatile, and it was just wonderful.
Thank you. Other reports. Councilmember Peterson, I, on the Forest City, would you like to make a comment? Are we going to do it jointly?
Mayor, we're just very excited. We're having, there's a lot of energy building, we're getting a lot of phone calls. We've got opportunities for 1,000 volunteers to have work to do on that day, from painting schools to helping with the school landscaping, to serving in individual homes for the elderly or those who are disabled. Mayor, there's just all kinds of wonderful opportunities to serve, and a lot of people are jumping to it, and we just invite everyone out. It's October 20th. We're calling it Gilbert Make a Difference Day, since National Make a Difference Day is a week later. But it's going to be a great, great day, Mayor.
And for citizens who are looking to find where the service opportunities are, it's on our town website. I know it's been in the paper, and why don't we just assume for right now, direct them to the town website. In addition to the Make a Difference Day service activities during the morning, as was previously talked about, in the afternoon, our neighborhoods, and that could be your next door neighbor, it could be five or six close together, it could be a whole group of neighbors, are encouraged to gather together and use that evening as a time to get to know each other as part of the GAIN program, which is getting Arizona involved in neighborhoods. Thank you. Any other comments? Future meetings, I will make note that our study session as a council will be on October 23rd, Tuesday, that is a different date than a year ago, but I think we've had plenty notice on that, so it'll be on the 23rd, begins at 4:00. Councilmember Daniels, what time is our speaking assignment with our mayor's youth advisory council?
6:00.
6:00. And so if there is to be like an executive session, if we could just keep in mind, two of us have a speaking assignment at 6:00. And if you know, looked at the calendar, it said that there's a potential joint meeting on October 23rd, and right now there's nothing scheduled. Thank you. Anything else on future meetings? Agenda Item 30, report from Town Manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'd just like to remind everybody, October 13th is Barktoberfest. It'll be up here at the Civic Center grounds. It'll be from 9:00 to 3:00. A lot of great activities, bringing your dogs up. There's Halloween costume, best trick contest, a lot of great vendors. So again, October 13th, 9:00 to 3:00 at the Civic.
Will Spot and Otis Banger be there?
I have inquired. I'm not sure if they're going to make an appearance or not.
Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to meeting them in person, as family members.
Yes.
And I, from a dog perspective, any Gilbert owner of a dog would love to come to Barktoberfest. And that's October 13th, as you said. Anything else? Thank you. Agenda Item 31, report from members of the council on current events. Agenda Item 32, report from Mayor. It looks like I have three items. Once again, thank you for the wonderful birthday greeting, and what a pleasure to share snicker bars. It doesn't get any better than that. And thank you for that nice gesture. The second item, this Saturday, will be a Gilbert Arts Walk at the Water Tower Park. It will be the first and third Saturdays from October to March, with the exception in November will be the first and second, so not to conflict with Gilbert Days Parade on the 17th. The Saturday's from 9:00 to 1:00, and we encourage residents to come and support. I understand that this week to draw citizens into the Arts Walk, at 11:00 a.m., there will be a hula hoop contest of some sort. And if council members are around, I'm sure that they would love to have you participate. The last item I had is for the council to also, from a public perspective, the subcommittee that helped create new evaluation forums for several key leaders in the town, including our town manager, thank you. We have completed the process, and there's an official two-page document that summarizes that, that I have signed this evening, that will now be put in Town Manager Patrick Banger's file. And as a council, I appreciated the chance to also receive feedback from town leadership, and to our town manager, thank you. It's been a wonderful year, a lot of great accomplishments, and as was noted in the two-page document, some very positive feedback for you. And we'll carry on, there's more to do. On that note, thank you for all of the participation tonight. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.